Let's call our Finance Committee to Order. Today is December 5th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would take, move the agenda and approval of the minutes from November 28, 2016 as posted.
Second.
Can we have a motion, a second on the agenda and the minutes? Any questions or discussion on either of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. It will pass. Travel requests, we have five items, I believe, or four. Tom, would you like Bruce to read all of those?
I could take the travel request, or it doesn't matter.
Okay, go ahead.
If you can hear me, okay.
Yeah, we hear you fine.
Okay. Travel request, Keith Caspary, Airport Director, Detective Class, organizational meeting of the Regional Air Service Alliance, destines in Minneapolis, Minnesota, dates January 26 through the 29, amount not to exceed $250. Lieutenant McCarroll amended date change, class rifle instructor recertification, destination Johnston, Iowa. The date is November 7, 2016, amount not to exceed $190. McCarroll is amended, one person instead of three, and the date changed and cost changed. Class meeting firearms instructor recertification, destination Johnston, Iowa. Date November 18, 2016, with the amount not to exceed $165. Bob Wolf, Chief Building Inspector, amended change, class meeting in Wisconsin, commercial building code re-pressure, destination Madison, Wisconsin, February 26 through March 1st, amount not to exceed $1,205.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the travel requests. Any questions or discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those pass. Pre-oths.
Mr. Chairman, airport amended pre-oth, amount estimated of $1,420.22 plus $344.72 shipping and handling. Expenditure is sand for use on the runways, taxiways, and ramps to improve braking action. Also for the airport, $3,000 for use on runways in icy winter weather. Building maintenance, $3,780 for elevator repair at the East Park Avenue parking ramp. Also building and maintenance, $21,220. Replacement and installation of the air handler for the first floor of City Hall. Building maintenance, $24,035. Provide services to furnish and install temperature controls to existing train system for air handler unit at City Hall. Clerk's office, $1,296 for Waterloo, Cedar Falls city directories for city departments. Garage, $2,065.45 for expenditure is to replace transmissions and code enforcement Ford Ranger truck. Leisure services, $16,000. Equipment parts from various vendors based on price and availability of individual parts. Police, $3,098.99 for the UFEV Touch Ultimate Annual Maintenance License Renewal. Sewer department, $6,776. Pump motor repair as rewind motor and stator bearing, assemble and test for Hawkeye lift station number two pump motor. And lastly sewer department, $3,350. One 18 inch by 8 inch and one 20 inch by 8 inch replacement expansion joint for number two Easton blower.
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the pre-oths. Any questions on any of those items?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I just wanted to ask, and maybe you're gonna say the same thing, but the first pre-oth for the sewer department, the shipping needs to be added, it should be plus $300 for shipping there. The one for $6,776.
Oh, okay. Would you amend that, Bruce?
Yes, so we're gonna go ahead and add...
How much was it?
$6,776 plus 300 shipping.
Okay, so the $6,776 plus 300 and...
Even.
300 even for shipping and handling on that, Mr. Chairman. Okay. And then a question I had, so for Paul, the, just an explanation on the $16,000, it seems pretty generic, not sure what we're purchasing.
Sure, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. JP Bolger, our golf manager, and he also manages the shop for other equipment, goes out to bid to about four or possibly five different companies for parts for our John Deere equipment, our Toro equipment, all of our maintenance equipment. So these are parts that we'll use over the winter months to repair and rehab equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Hold on. Tom, they took the vote on that one?
Yep, aye.
Okay.
Very good.
No worries. It's okay.
Okay, we only have one budget item that's on file at the Clerk's office, and the bills payment this week, $960,430.34.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the bills payment. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion, the bills are paid.
Tom, how did you vote on the pre-oths and the bills?
Aye, both. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
Sir.
We have motion and a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We have a pretty packed and tidy audience today. Just like to welcome everyone to our 5:30 PM City Council Meeting on this December 5th. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
All right, we have a packed council via telephone as well. Now is the time for our invocation or our prayer this evening. Every month, we invite someone from our faith community and not faith community to come and provide us with a prayer or some type of invocation on the first Monday. And this evening, we are glad to have Pastor Jesse Tink from Prairie Lakes Church Waterloo Campus, I believe, right? So if you would please join us at the podium, and everyone here, it is your, you can either sit down or you can stand up, it is up to you what you want to do. We're not forcing anyone to do it a certain type of way. So Pastor Tink.
Let's pray. God, thanks for another day. We receive it from you as a gift. We couldn't have done anything to make today happen, but you did. So thank you for allowing us to experience it. God, we recognize that government, as much as we'd like to take credit for it, is not our idea, it's yours, and you've created it for our good and for our justice. And as much as we like to feel the right to complain about it, God, today we say thank you for it. And Father, for the leaders in this room, I want to say, thank you for raising them up for us. God, many of them come from other jobs and concerns, and they've decided to give their gifts and talents for our benefit, so thank you for them. God, for them, I ask that you do a couple of things. Remind them of how important and sacred their task is. God, remind them of how important it is for them to be in good and healthy relationship with one another, to treat one another with respect and dignity, and to model that for the rest of us. And God, finally, I want to ask for wisdom for them. Our community, just like any community, God, faces significant challenges, challenges that require wisdom, and maybe even wisdom beyond the wisdom they have. So would you grant them more? God, encourage them tonight, and would you help us as citizens of Waterloo to commit to personally praying for them and encouraging them as well? In your name, God, we pray this. Amen.
All right, thank you Pastor Tink. Today's Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Ron Welper, Ward 4 Councilmember. Ward, and I just looked and saw five.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may now be seated. Sorry about that, Jerome. That's okay. We had a discussion earlier. Oh, you did? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Tonight, we are deleting items four, five, and six on our regular agenda, and we are adding to our consent agenda 1B3, which reads, "The recommendation of appointment of Jennifer Sparks to the position of permit writer at the Waterloo Building Inspectors Department effective December 6, 2016." It is correct electronically and on hard copy, but we need to read that into the record.
Second.
Excuse me, and also the minutes of November 28, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Questions, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is an appreciation for Mr. Gary Luck for 30 years of service. So if you want to join me up front, Gary? All right, so Gary, we'd like to present this to you on behalf of the City of Waterloo, and it says, "In appreciation for 30 years of valuable and dedicated service to the City of Waterloo, Iowa, October 28, 2016." And while we have young people in the audience, I would like to point out, to be able to be somewhere and to serve your community for over 30 years, you know, sometimes it's not the most glamorous job. Well, maybe it is.[948.12][948.12](laughter) But you know what? That dedication, that passion, that drive for making the City of Waterloo a better place is in Gary's heart, and we want to thank him personally for 30 years of service. And could we all give him a great round of applause?[966.02][966.02](applause) You want to make any comments?
No, I've been upping downs.
All right.
Throughout 30.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate you guys having your work for it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
I just want to thank you.
All right, the next treat we have, Councilman Jacobs and I, months ago, when we first started, maybe months ago, we were having conversations about what can we do during city council meetings? And one of the ideas was give updates or reports from city council members or by the mayor's, the mayor during council meetings, maybe once a month. But another idea was sparked, was having some art within the city council chambers, so that we can showcase just beauty, not that all of these faces and mugs up here aren't beauty in itself, but it's just having the expression and having a live or city council, city council chambers. And so we reached out to Kent Shanko, our Culture and Arts Director, and because, one, we knew that we have one of the best culture and arts centers in the entire state, but trying to get his ideas over what we can do, is there anything that's stored at the Center for the Arts that we can bring out and bring forward? But Kent took it to an entirely different level, and it was the idea of trying to get young people engaged in providing art and art showcase for our council chambers. So as you can see this evening, we have wonderful pieces of art from here to there and all around the council chambers. So it's very special to us because our young people are our future. So we're thankful to them. Is there a presentation from...
I think we've got the group here that can come up.
All right, come on up. All right, you can come this way. All right, some can stand over to my right, some to my left. All right, let me sneak in here. All right, who do we have? Who wants to lead?
Well, I'm Heidi, and I am the Adult Leader of Youth Art Team, but these students are the youth art team, and they have, in their short lives, accomplished more than a lot of adult artists will ever accomplish in their whole life. So I want you guys to kind of hear from them, actually. Do you have any specific question? Do you want to hear?
Tell us a little bit about the artwork, and if you're a future artist, and was it fun, and what you like most about art?
Well, let's start with Jada. Jada here. Jada Taylor did this piece in the corner here. Jada, how old were you when you did that piece of art?
Six.
So that was back in 2010, it was our first project, and what inspired that painting? Why did you paint what you did?
Because I liked art.
What is the story? Do you remember? You came up, there's a story here in that painting. Where did that story come from?
He said he had a dream about everybody...
Who did?
Mayor Hart.
And how did you come up with that story?
Because he dreamed, and he told me, you interviewed him.
So Jada interviewed Quentin Hart back in 2010, and what was his dream? What is the dream you painted about here?
Get ice cream.
Say it again louder.
That everybody get ice cream?[1213.12][1213.12](laughter)
So the title of that piece is Ice Cream House. Okay, and how old are you now?
13.
So Jada's been a member of this team for 13, for 13 years?
Seven.
Since 2010.[1227.12][1227.12](laughter) Okay. How about the butterflies? Do you want to talk about the butterflies? Yeah. Say your name.
My name is Diamond Cotton.
Okay, Diamond. Who made these butterflies that are in that photo there?
Youth art.
Youth art, and how many?
Fifty-three.
We made 53 butterflies, okay? And then the Iowa Arts Council invited us to Des Moines for the Iowa Arts Summit, and you guys were featured artists there, right? How did we get 53 butterflies to Des Moines?
We used a semi truck.
We used a semi truck? And what was that experience like for you to go to Des Moines and share about youth art team with adult artists?
I felt special because we were like, basically going somewhere else, like out of the city. We went somewhere else out of the city because of our artwork, so that just made me feel happy.
Do you want to...
One more?
One more? Um, how about we talk about what we're doing now? Because that's in the picture back here. I'm gonna stand, I don't want to stand in front. How about Kimari? Where's Kimari? Come here. What's our project right now that we're doing that's shown in that canvas back there?
Street murals.
Yes. So these guys brainstormed projects they want to do, and the favorite idea was to paint an entire road. They voted, and that's what they would like to do. So we've been painting temporary street murals. So that's a picture from one that we did on Lime Street this summer. Okay? No?[1323.83][1323.83](laughter)
Well, you know, from the bottom of our hearts, I think I can speak collectively, we are absolutely appreciative of all of the work that all of you have done, your hard work, your imagination, your creativity. We thank you so much for your dedication of art to the city council chambers. I don't know if we've ever had a young group dedicate art to this, to the council chambers before, so it's a lot of great people that come here that will be able to see your work and see everything that you've done. So thank you so much for this, you're gonna choke me up a little bit, but thank you so much for your dedication today. All right? All right, thank you.[1380.25][1380.25](applause) Right now, before I forget, I also had another special, two people to be here this evening. I thought I had it on the agenda, but I don't know what happened. But this evening, we have Greg and Janet Kessling here, all the way from the city of Indianapolis, Indiana. I had the fortunate opportunity to meet them at the Conference for Mayors, and they have an outstanding program that's being done in Indianapolis. So Brian Carr, Steve Sesterhan, and Councilman Jerome Amos, the Hoyes, we invited them up so that they can talk tomorrow at the Center for the Arts. I think at nine o'clock is our first meeting, and one o'clock is the second meeting.
12:30.
12:30, that's what I said.[1457.02][1457.02](laughter) But 12:30, and their program is called Recycle Force. You know, so often we hear about social services programs that are trying to help people to get back in the workforce and learn the skills, but they have a unique twist to some programming where they combine different initiatives, for-profit, nonprofit, to make this a successful program and help get people back on track. So we appreciate them being here. If you would please step up to the podium and tell us in three minutes about what tomorrow's about, and a little bit about Recycle Force.
Well, first off, thank you. It was very much an honor to meet you at the United States Conference of Mayors event that was hosted in Indianapolis. And our mayor, Mayor Joe Hogg, sends his greetings to all of you here today, and so we're happy to be here. Recycle Force and Keys to Work are two separate companies. We have a continuum, we call it ABC. As people are coming home from prison, it's, A is any job where they come to the social enterprise, and I hope that's a term you guys know about, businesses with social purposes. B is the better job or bridge job when they move from the heavy oversight and monitoring that they have with ankle bracelets and reporting they must do, and then move into the better job, which is attempted perm. And the C is the career when our Workforce Investment Board and our, we owe us services and take shape. So the employers get a chance, we get a chance to help this man or woman move from heavy monitoring into attempted perm, and then the employer can spend the workforce development dollars on training when they're ready. So I hope that's, actually, I've stolen the ABC from our mayor, it's, Mayor Hogg sets ABC, and so we're here, and we're very honored to be here, and we hope the Indianapolis Colts win tonight.[1580.25][1580.25](laughter) Very important game for us.
I got Andrew Luck on my fantasy team.
There you go. Good.
But we want to thank you. Send my regards back to the mayor, I hadn't followed up in a while, but just a wonderful program that is creative, creates jobs, livable wages, so we are absolutely looking forward to hearing your presentation tomorrow as well. So thank you for your trip here.
Thank you so much for having us. I'll see you all tomorrow.
All right, thank you. And this is the time, if you would like to leave, please do so at this time, or you're more than welcome to stay.[1618.83][1618.83](laughter)
We just drove six and a half hours.
She wants to watch the Colts.
Okay.[1625.12][1625.12](laughter) All right, thank you. Thank you, Brian. All right. Oh, this is oral presentations time. This is your opportunity to address the city council with whatever's on your heart. You have three minutes. Please step up to the podium, name, address, and let us know what's on your mind.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. This is following a comment that was made last week that, I believe, the head of the Building Association, that it's good that we have so many empty homes and rental properties in Waterloo. Well, I talked to some landlords after I left here, and they said they kind of disagree about the rental properties. They wish that all their rental properties were rented. And it is true that we got about 1,000 empty rentals in Waterloo, and one of our big areas, they're concentrated in one big area in Waterloo, and they're rundown places, they said, and beyond, I mean, nobody would want to live in them, so. But anyway, we're building, we're building, building, building. We're giving land away, we're using government money to build them, they're using government money to build them, and we turn around and we rent to people who are on government assistance. I think there's something wrong with this picture. I don't know. I think we're still outbuilding their growth. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to speak briefly about TIF dollars. You folks took $300,000 out of the TIF, which I thought was wonderful, but then we look at the split, and the split is, the city got $120,000, and the other entities got some. And then the financial director stated that this was the best way to fund because we didn't have to, as taxpayers, pay all of it. We do pay all of it. The schools get their, what they don't get from the state. The state legislators told me, when I was addressing the TIF, they said, Forrest, we pay the schools. So I pay the TIF, I pay the schools. Then, in talking with county, they said, well, yes, we have to charge you more. Then, in talking with county, they said, well, yes, we have to charge you more because of the TIF. Because if we had the TIF dollars, we wouldn't have to charge you as much county. So the taxpayers, the city taxpayers and the county taxpayers, pay all of that. Anything the TIF doesn't fill, we backfill with somebody, with money to other organizations. We don't gain. To say that, not to put it under the 810 levy. If you put it under the 810 levy, there is a limit on the 810 levy. That would protect us taxpayers from paying that much. And when you do the fees, the stormwater fee, the county, the school, the church, everybody pays the stormwater fee. Well, where do they get their money for the stormwater fee? They get it from us, the taxpayer. The city gets it all, but all of those entities that pay, it comes from us. Ultimately, we are the funding source for all of these things. Anybody that, you know, uses utilities, the franchise fee that you initiated, the schools, the churches, the county buildings, they all pay the franchise fee. Where do they get the money to pay the fee? From the taxpayers of Waterloo. Waterloo is getting a big chunk of money. And with your $120,000, you hired another position for $100,000. So now we got $20,000 that can go back to the people. That's probably less than a buck apiece. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. My comments are about actually on the consent agenda, two through four. And again, I agree with the people that are, and I guess I have to ask a question. Do I wait till you do that, or can I comment now? Mr. Mayor?
No, wait till the consent agenda, until we vote. And then normally, there's no comments, but I'll let you comment at that time.
Okay. I will relinquish. Thank you.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't go too far. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Going a second time?
Motion to receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items one through three. And within that are the bill's payment. The bill's payment this week is $960,430.34. Nine six zero comma four three zero point three four.
Second.
All right, those items have been made with the second. Like I said, I will allow comments at this time.
Mr. Mayor? David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. I guess the reason I came up during the oral presentation was after the consent agenda has been approved, my comments don't really mean much. I will continue to make.
We haven't voted on it yet. I just, it was a motion and a second. So I gave you an opportunity, so you can speak.
Excuse me, sir. I missed that. Actually, like I said, two through four, but mainly on number four. I caught the article in the paper about the proposed River Loop area. And the picture really doesn't deem what property is available there. And cannot be justified for what is available for that area. I'll bother again today to make sure that I was not confused in my mind. Can we see what really is proposed? Because this proposal was from like 2003 or '04. And I'm thinking that at that time, the proposal was to take the area where the bakery is at, which is now speed.
Single speed.
Single speed. Because when I looked there today, there's not enough property between the River Loop Amphitheater and the Center for the Arts for any kind of construction like is showed in the paper. Let alone, we are overbuilding what we are, the ability to fill without vacating somewhere else. We need industry, which means jobs, to fill what we already have. You keep trying to fill downtown. However, what does not exist downtown? Anybody have a thought?
Yes, you get three minutes.
I'm asking you a question?
And if I answer and take fifty seconds, that's the end of your three minutes.
We have recreation, restaurants, some business. What still is missing? Maybe a grocery store? Because a lot of people want to move downtown, I think. We're proposing. My daughters lived in Chicago, downtown Chicago. They had a car, but if they didn't have the, and they used the L or the train or the bus or whatever, but they had a local grocery store they could walk to. That's what we want these people coming downtown to have, is someplace they can totally exist and there's nobody talking about a grocery store. Most of these places will have an apartment with a kitchen, and then they have to drive to Ivy, Fairway, whatever, to get groceries. That doesn't make sense. So is anybody talking to somebody about a grocery store downtown? We have submitted to you information from the real estate people about overbuilding, which seems to fall on deaf ears. Do you, do your own study, planning and zoning, and submit your true results. Thank you.
All right. The item number four is just setting the date of hearing. There'll be more specific information on that in a couple of weeks. And then there is conversations about having a grocery store. Is there anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt. Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the asbestos abatement services at 820 Newell Street, 915 Newell Street, 3126 Franklin Street, 71 Franklin Street, 927 Linden Avenue, 426 Cherry Street, 310 Oak Street, 847 Dawson Street, and 414 Thompson Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to make a correction. I think Councilman Schmidt, you left out 1107 Commercial Street when you were reading through. If I'm not mistaken, I just wanted to make that note in case it was overlooked.
It's not on my list.
Where's that at?
It's not on my list, Mr. Morrissey.
It's on mine, 1107 Commercial Street. I don't have it. It's on the bottom.
Oh, it's not on the electronic one, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the contract, but it's not in the.
Oh, I got you.
That's a good catch.
My mistake, Mr. Morrissey.
Let's blame Eric for that one. Is that, it's 1107, right?
Eric Trader City Planner. There was one address that was dropped from the specs, and I'm not sure if that was the address. So I'm not sure if it was correctly left off of the top list and accidentally left on the bottom list, or if it was missed on the top list and is correct on the bottom list. I'm not positive on that.
So it was one added, or was one deleted?
I've got the RFP.
Oh, I thought you said one was deleted.
Here's the RFP that was attached. So 1107 is included in the proposal.
Okay, it does look like it should include 1107, so it's just an oversight on the agenda wording?
So, so noted, 1107. Can we not tear down 1107 if it's not supposed to be there, though?
Correct. This is just the contract for asbestos abatement, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for your contribution. Yes, sir.
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. Are these already owned city properties that are included on Mr. Wupper's plan for vacant lots? Or are we now including nine or 10 more properties that are going to become vacant to have construction on? Thank you.
The 147 lots that we have?
The 153 now.
Are we adding, yes. That's what he, are we adding these to the list?
These will go to the list, but Mr. Wupper hasn't talked about these properties. Okay. Any other questions from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Motion to mayor with second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions?
Question I guess I would have, Mr. Mayor. So kind of following up on the comments from the public. These are 10 or 11 properties that the city owns that we're gonna take the houses down. Is that correct, Eric?
Eric Trader City Planner. Yes, this is just the abatement contract, but this is in preparation for the planned demolition contract that would follow.
And so how many more 657A houses do we own that we'll be having the same conversation here in the next few months?
Probably another 15 or so that we currently own. I think there's another nine or 10 that are kind of ready to go for the next, you know, they have the asbestos testing complete, so an asbestos abatement contract would be coming before the council soon. I think it was intentionally kind of broke up to not create too large of a contract that can get a little bit unmanageable. So we've got the 10 or so with this one, and there'll probably be another nine or 10 coming soon. And then there's still a few more that will still need to be tested.
So roughly 25? I don't want you to be exact, but roughly 25?
Maybe closer to roughly 20, but well.
Okay.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay. And again, just to be clear, that, those 28 are part of the 146 we've been talking about?
No.
Okay, so we've really got 175 lots?
Well, these aren't demoed yet, but yeah.
But I mean, we will. Okay, all right. That's my check. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion then to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, that Commercial Street's not on the bid tab, though.
Eric, or Dave?
Who's the question?
Commercial Street is not on the bid tab?
I have it on my sheet. It is a 657A property that we got about two years ago.
Is it included on the bid tab? That's the question. Is it included?
That'd be Mr. Schreit.
Eric Trader City Planner. I have forwarded on a message to Chris Western. I think that may have been the property that was removed. It may have been removed after the bid specs were originally sent out. So it might have been a supplemental that went to the prospective bidders to remove that address. But I am not for sure on that.
So if we approve this $14,800, does that include, just in case, does that include the property in question?
If it's not listed in the bid being provided, it would not include it. Is that correct, Kelly, that it's not included in the bid?
In the specifications that I have that are uploaded into Novus, it's listed in the specs.
Okay.
But what I don't know is how Chris notified them of if that was removed or not.
I did just receive a text from Chris saying that was the property to be removed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to read the bids.
I think, Dave, we'll get your opinion on this, too. I think tonight, we could read the bid as it was opened on Thursday, and then review everything tomorrow.
Yeah, read the bids now. Let's get them out in the open and make sure they conform with what we sent out. If they do, great. If they don't, we'll rehash it.
Okay. So, the bid. We had one bidder, it was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $14,800, and the estimate for the project was $21,350.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to then adopt a resolution awarding asbestos abatement contract to Advanced Environmental Testing and Abatement, Inc., for asbestos abatement of 820 Newell Street, 915 Newell Street, 3126 Franklin Street building. Are we gonna leave 1107 Commercial Street on there then, or remove that?
Remove it.
Okay. We won't do 1107 Commercial Street. 71 Franklin Street, 920 Linden Avenue, 420 Cherry Street, 310 Oak Street, 847 Dawson, and 414 Thompson Street in the amount of $14,800.
Second.
I think what we should do is do a motion to amend that resolution if we're going to strike out 1107 officially, just to make sure that everything's done properly.
I move to amend and strike out 1107 Commercial Street.
Second.
So a voice vote, or is it?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Why would we drop a property from this list?
What would be some reason that someone decided to buy it or later, or?
Eric Trader City Planner. I know that Chris had a reason for dropping it. I believe he did discuss that with Noel Anderson, the Director of Community Planning and Development. I do not know what that reason is, though.
Yeah, I have a talk with Noel tomorrow about this, too. We have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, this is on the amendment?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll take a vote on the amendment, and then we'll take a vote on the resolution.
Roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, so that was dropped, and now we have a need to adopt a resolution. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your patience, counsel. Number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lind?
I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, fiscal year 2016 Leisure Services Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract, number 925.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions about this particular item? Is there anyone in the audience that have questions about this particular item going a second time? Mr. Lind?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Questions, Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for a review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry about that, Tom. All right.
Our first bid was from Graff Excavating Incorporated from 803 East State Street. I believe that's Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $54,515. Second bid was...
What's the estimate for this, so people have that in mind when they're listening?
Sure. The estimate for the project was $50,394. The bid amount for Graff Excavating was $54,515. Next bid was from Veeth Construction, Cedar Falls. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $45,056. Next came from Chick Fry Excavating of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. The bid amount was $69,849.80. Next is Benton Sand and Grapple of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $42,375. Next is J&amp;K Contractors LLC of Ames, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount is $67,075.50. And the last bid was from Peterson Contractors of Rhinebeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $61,613.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take seven, eight, and nine, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
On the electronic, it's four, five, and six, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement with Cedar Falls Utilities to allow for the construction and future maintenance of an electrical transmission line located directly to the east of 2815 WCF and N Drive. And number five, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $9,000 for the completion of an airfield payment maintenance management system report for runway 6-24 and associated taxiways at Waterloo Regional Airport. And authorize the mayor to sign said agreement. And number six, a resolution approving a one-month extension to the memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District to extend technical and professional services in the operation of the Waterloo Educational Access Channel. We deleted these.
No.
No.
No, it was deleted. Or these.
Four, five, and six were deleted.
Four, five, and six.
Right, but they're different. They're different.
Those all, that was Summerland Park.
Yeah.
But it's correct on your agenda right now. So number four is the permanent easement agreement with Cedar Falls Utilities.
Correct.
That's what you read.
That's what you read.
All right. So the easement agreements, professional service agreement, and the memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community Schools are what we need to vote on?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask... I got a call on item number four from a citizen who said they noticed a CFU truck over there working on that. And I guess the question was that I thought historically a publicly owned utility like that, that they were kind of prohibited from operating in other areas. I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Zellifer or what. I mean, I thought part of their charter was to operate within their boundaries and not to compete against private utilities. And that was just a question I had given to me, so I just said I'd raise it. Do you know anything about that, Dave?
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. No, Mr. Schmidt, I must confess ignorance. I haven't the faintest idea what any of this is about. Nobody's contacted me or asked me. We'll find out and let you know. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Eric.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. I believe this is a line that currently exists, and it's a connection between Mid-American Energy in Waterloo and Cedar Falls Utilities that they can use in times of emergency if one needs power from the other. And because of the expansion of Hydrate, it's an overhead line that's having to be moved, so there's a new easement being provided for that. So it's something that's already there. It's just being moved for the Hydrate expansion.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Other questions on these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Seven, eight, and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
Number seven is a motion approving a change order number three for a net increase of $163,957.18 for the fiscal year 2015 street reconstruction program, contract number 873, and authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number eight is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa at a total cost of $3,622,151.38 for fiscal year 2015 street reconstruction program, contract number 873, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. Number nine is a motion approving change order number one for a net increase of $1,369.50 for fiscal year 2016 storm sewer improvements, contract number 906, and authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion. So number one for a net decrease.
Net decrease.
Number nine.
All right. Number nine.
Number nine.
Yes, sir. Do we get a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Mr. Morrissey. Eric, number seven, please. The increase.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. This increase is actually extra work. In that particular year, we had planned on overlaying morning dub drive, and we put those designs together in the late fall and early winter, and we got out there that spring of 2015. The winter played such havoc on that road that there was about 250 feet of morning dub drive that we could no longer overlay. It would have been a waste of money. So we added that into the reconstruction program and reconstructed it instead of overlaying it. So that's the majority of the increase. There was also, I believe, a little bit of... A couple areas where we had a little more excavation and rock needed for some porsoils that we couldn't anticipate.
Any questions about that? She's got a question, sir.
Answer my question.
All right. I read your mind.
You're starting to think alike. I wasn't going to say that.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers? Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Seven, eight, and nine. Well, 10, 11, 12.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by Veeth Construction Company of Cedar Falls, Iowa at a total cost of $167,783.44 for the fiscal year 2016 storm sewer improvements, contract number 906, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. 11 is adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number two with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa in an amount not to exceed $18,250 for construction-related services for the fiscal year 2016 Shawless Road Trail Extension Phase One, contract number 858, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item 12 is adopting a resolution approving the system-wide improvement framework letter of intent with the Army Corps of Engineers for continued rehabilitation, eligibility of sanitary sewers, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right. Motion's been second. Questions, Counsel? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Counsel Dave Dreyer, 3145 West Fore Street. My comment would be on resolution 11, that we seem to be able to make sure we build bike trails for people who don't pay for a bike trail. Yet if I want to go fishing, I have to pay for a license. If I want to have a boat, I have to pay license fees for the trailer,